Good morning. I'd like to call the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting the order for Tuesday, November 22nd, 2022. I'd like to welcome everybody here this morning. We'll say that it is special to have the swearing in ceremony before this meeting. And Charles and Judge Vote Right, thank you for their efforts and all the Supervisor Elections team. And thank you for everybody for coming and for the candidates, all the candidates who ran and for the candidates who got elected, we wish them all well. I want to welcome our new Commissioner from District Two, Ms. Leota Wilkinson. And look forward to working you for the next number of years. So we'll begin our meeting today by asking Pastor Don Helms with the Branch Community Church to come forward to deliver our invocation. And Commissioner Adams Act will lead us into pledge. Please stand if you're able.
Let's pray. Lord, I am very grateful for the gospel this morning. I'm grateful for the good news that Jesus loved me when I had a lot of reasons not to be loved, and I'm grateful for His death and His resurrection. And so I pray for the business of this meeting and all future meetings, that the decisions that are made would create a culture and a dynamic in our community that families and churches and all gospel ministry could flourish all across this county. And so I pray for the commissioners and I pray for all the political leaders that stand before me right now. I pray that you would guide them and direct them and give them wisdom and discernment as they provide leadership and direction in representing the individuals in our community. And so, Lord, I just pray for your special blessing on the rest of this meeting, and it's in the name of your Son, Jesus, that I pray.
Amen. Do you have any pledges? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you Pastor Helms and thank you Commissioner Adams Act. Commissioners, as you see on our agenda, the first item of business is approval of the minutes presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the minutes stated on our agenda.
Got a proper motion by Commissioner Harvey, proper second by Commissioner Adams Act. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, item three, this is the meeting where once a year, we elect a new chairman and a new vice chair. So we'll move into that section of our agenda. And I'll ask County Administrator Terry Suggs to come forward.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. County Commissioners, how are y'all doing this morning? It's good to be here. Please bear with me with my voice this morning. We are getting over that bug that everybody seems to have called the last couple of weeks. So if the good Lord's willing here this morning, we'll get through this. As you know, this is the meeting that we do elect a new chair, a vice chair. But before we do that, if I could take a moment and a privilege of administrator to say a few things about our current and our outgoing chair. You know, every year we do this, and every year I get the privilege of standing here in front of the Board of County Commissioners and talking about an individual in his past year or her past year of leadership. This is no different. This year, I get to talk about the leadership of Chairman Bill Pickens. This year, Mr. Pickens has been a lot changed. You know, we had Commissioner Turner sat through the year of COVID, which no one ever wants to go through that again. You know, and this year, we went through two named storms, Ian and Nicole. And leadership is what you bring to the table when it is that we need guidance and assistance making decisions for our citizens and our community at any given moment. And your availability, sir, this year was second to none. You that joined us on our Monday morning meetings, turned into pre-agenda meetings. You know, not a lot of folks know this, but everybody needs to know this, that every Monday, Chairman Pickens showed up at nine o'clock here at the Board of County Commission Office and sat with his management team, and we sat the agenda. And those Mondays that we didn't have pre-agenda meetings, he sat with us and we went through the agenda and we went through projects. So your leadership, sir, is absolutely paramount to the success we've had this year. Thank you for that. You also sit absolutely. Thank you. It's difficult when you run a full-time business and you make yourself available to your staff for what you've done this year, not only with our pre-agenda meetings on Monday, but with SHIP and AHAC. Those meetings have been sometimes long or just, but they've been great meetings and your leadership as chairs is the reason for that. You sit as the Chair of the Park and Recs Committee. Again, another Monday afternoon meeting that you bring yourself up here for every day. We can't thank you enough for your availability. And for the time that you spent with us at the EOC, you know, during the storms, I hope that it was enlightening and I hope that you understand the process of what it is that we do there because it is a full-time 24-hour service once we get into that mode and we activate our EOC. You know, and we got great leadership at the EOC with Director Grimes and his staff, Chief Hutchison and Ms. Gee. You can't ask for better staff out there, you know, and Danny and Stefan have done a wonderful job out there, you know, but just having you in the room and having you present there meant a lot to us and we appreciate that very much. You know, I remember this is our second stint together, sir. You did this four years ago and you and I had a lot of conversations. They always usually start out with a text message that goes, hey, do you have a minute? And, you know, those will come in the mornings, those will come in the evenings, those will come on the weekends, it doesn't matter, you know, because one thing about Chairman Pickens is when he's got a question, he's going to find out the answer. And Chairman, communication has always been one of those things that we are proud of and we thank you for taking that opportunity to be a part of that and to reach out to us whenever you needed something and asked a question. That's how we find solutions to problems, so thank you for that. But I want to finish this by giving a quote, and it's not a quote of anyone in particular, it's just something you and I talked about four years ago. More than once, you and I had a conversation and things were tough, you know, and then you said to me, "Mr. Administrator, I just feel like I'm in the sophomore slump." Okay? And I told you then that no, sir, you weren't. You were doing an outstanding job. I'm going to tell you, sir, four years later, you're a Hall of Famer in my book, and I thank you for all that you've done. Mr. Chairman, if you'll join me for just a second down here, I've got something I'd like to give you, sir. Mr. Chairman says, presented to Robert W. Pickens, Jr., in appreciation of effective and dedicated leadership as chairman, 2021 through 2022, presented as 22nd Day of November, 2022, Putnam County Board of Accounting Commissioners. And what I would like to add to that, and also to all the staff at the Board of County Commissioners, thank you for everything that you do for us.
Well, I'm slightly overwhelmed. I figured I would get a plaque or a gavel, but the things that were said, I'm not easily come to a tear other than if it's my grandchildren or something like that, but I did. I am truly grateful. Each year that I've been a commissioner, it's been a challenge. Commissioners, y'all know, and you're about to find out, from budget to retaining employees to taking care of citizens' requests, it is a challenge. And I will say for the commission, I truly enjoy working with you every day. I'm proud to be part of this commission. Administrator Suggs, thank you for your team, the executive team, and all the employees of Putnam County. And you see it, we see it every day because we're interacting with them, but when you go to the EOC and see the transformation of employees switching roles to fill a role out of the EOC and how well Safety Director J.R. Grimes and Fire Chief Chad Hutchison and Stefan and Danielle took care of those two back-to-back storms that created a lot of havoc in Putnam County, you just see that we have a lot of stars in Putnam County. And I'm just proud to be part of the team, as I'll say in closing. Thank you very much and I am truly honored. Thank you.
We'll go ahead and get to the business at hand, and that is the business of electing a chairman and vice chair. Commissioners, I have about four or five paragraphs I need to read here for the record, so if you bear with me for just a moment, then we'll open it up for nominations. As the moderator, I will open the floor for nominations. Nominations do not require a second. If only one name is placed in nomination for the moderator, the moderator will ask for a motion to close the nominations and to elect a nominee by acclamation. A second to the motion and a vote will follow. If more than one name is placed in the nomination, the moderator will ask for a motion to close nominations, a second to the motion, and a vote will follow. The moderator will then ask for a show of hands and support the nominees in order for which they were nominated. Moderator will acknowledge the newly-elected chair, and the same procedure will follow for the election of the vice chair. So at this time, Mr. Chairman, I will open up the floor for any nominations for chair.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to nominate Mr. Terry Turner for chairman of the Board of County Commissioners.
We have a motion on the floor to nominate Commissioner Terry Turner for chairs or any other nominations?
Move nominations cease.
Move nominations to cease. At this time, we'll go ahead and make the motion to nominate or approve by acclamation. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. In a second for that motion. I apologize, I should ask for a motion in a second.
I make the motion to nominate Commissioner Turner as the chairman of the Board of County Commissioners.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Very good. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and congratulations, Chairman Turner. And so at this time, we will go ahead and we will make or ask for motions for vice chair.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Larry Harvey be vice chairman.
I have a motion on the floor for Commissioner Larry Harvey to serve as vice chair. Do we have any other nominations? Here none, I'll go ahead and close nominations and ask for a motion to appoint Commissioner Larry Harvey vice chair by acclamation.
She'll move.
We'll have a second.
Second.
Second, thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Welcome and look forward to serving both you, Chairman Turner, as well as you, Vice Chair Harvey, for another year. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, it is now your meeting, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to have a three-minute recess to start with. Thank you, Commissioners, for the vote of confidence. We're going to start, move right into our planning and development portion of the meeting, which was actually slated on the agenda for 9:05, because it had to be that, or soon thereafter, it had to be that because that's how it was advertised, but we're getting to it at 10:21. Our first item on the agenda is the plat vacation resolution number 2022-107.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, Joseph Sealy, Planning and Development Services. This is an application to vacate a portion of the Ridgedale Platte, recorded on April 22nd, 1927. The applicant is Kenneth Schwing. Location is the Ridgedale subdivision located east of North Mooney Road and meadly west of the Palaca Shopping Mall along Hudson Street. Future land uses urban service in the zoning district as residential single-family R1A and residential R3. Ridgedale subdivision was plotted for 408 lots, each lot 5,000 square feet, and recorded on April 22nd, 1927. The plot was consistent of several streets that were never constructed, as well as plotted lots in 1980, Putnam County recorded an easement. Oversold lots within blocks 31 and 32, providing ingress and egress to the Palaca Mall due to a wetlands and stormwater management facilities further east in the Palaca Mall parcel. Here is an outline of the Ridgedale subdivision. As you know, the applicant has only requested to vacate a portion to the north. Here is the actual plot. As you can see, the second street down, Hudson Street, was originally plotted to run east and west horizontally. Here is the outline of the lots and portions of roadways to be vacated. Those lots in blue are the ones to be vacated, and as you can see on this map here, Hudson Street was plotted to go east-west, however, there's a portion of Hudson that became an easement back in 1980 prior to subdivision regulations, which is why we did not replat this portion. However, Hudson Street will remain the same. The applicant is proposing remove approximately 65 lots. Proposal would vacate all streets and right-of-ways, which have not become necessary for use by dedication or utilities. If approved, lots would become just acreage and subject to density requirements of the urban service future land use classification and further subject to the standards of the R1A and R3 zoning districts. Bees in Hudson Street extension would not be affected by this plat vacation. Staff has recommended approval of this item to the commissioners. That concludes the presentation. I don't know if the applicant is here to answer questions, but staff is here.
Any questions of staff at this time? Is the...
I have one. As I understand from talking to Heather yesterday, this will not affect the paved part of Hudson Road, correct?
Correct.
The ones to the back of the mall, it won't affect that at all?
Not at all.
Okay, and it can't be closed because of this plat vacation?
Correct. We are not, the applicant's not proposing to vacate that west portion of Hudson Street. The easement would have to be dissolved, so the underlying lots that were plotted underneath that easement of Hudson Street will be dissolved, however, the easement remains intact and I think require an action.
Say and wish to speak. I'll close the public hearing then. Oh, excuse me, is anybody else?
2-003, as described in our agenda packet of the Ridgedale-platted subdivision.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Rich, do we need to read the resolution by title only? Could you read the resolution, sir, or would you like me to on page 22 of your packet?
Mr. Chairman, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners for Putnam County, vacating a recorded subdivision, plating roads, case PV-22-003 by title only. Resolution 22-107.
Is there any further questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. The next case is item B on the agenda, which is a small-scale land use amendment. Page 43 of your packet.
Thank you. I'd like to, there's a companion application for rezoning, I believe is item C. The third item, I'm going to present both of these items together because they are companion applications, so there will be two motions at the end of the presentation. This is a future land use map amendment, SM-22-002, and rezoning, REV-22-007. The application is to amend the future land use map and zoning maps. The applicant is Yeldonus Hodge. Agent for Mr. Hodges is John Jenkins. This is an 11.43 acre vacant parcel located at 751 State Road 207. The future land use map request is to amend the future land use map from agriculture to rural center, and the rezoning request is to rezone from agriculture to commercial neighborhood C1. A little bit of background, 11.4 acre parcel is predominantly agriculture. The surrounding uses are predominantly agriculture with some commercial land uses and zoning spread out strictly along this portion of State Road 207. Immediately east of the subject parcels is St. John's Mini Storage, which is located across 207. There's several other commercial land use and zoning designations across the street there. The applicant is requesting to amend the future land use to rural center, to allow for a zoning amendment to the commercial neighborhood or C1. The rural center land use classification is at least intense commercial land use classification, often catering to development in rural areas of the county. C1 zoning classification is at least intense commercial zoning designation in the Land Development Code catering to less intense commercial uses. Here is an aerial of the 11.43 acre parcel. To the south is the antiquated subdivision Floral Park. As you can see, to the west, to the north, is most predominantly agriculture. Immediately to the east is the St. John's Mini Storage. As you can see, it's predominantly surrounded by agriculture land use, however, there is a portion to the east, you're seeing that is rural residential and commercial land uses. Here is a zoning map showing the predominantly agricultural surrounding area with some sporadic PUD rezoning and commercial zoning to the east. So the current future land use and zoning designation does not allow for commercial uses as requested in the application. Per policy A193A3, rural center land use allows for neighborhood commercial uses, and per section 4581 of the Land Development Code, C1 zoning designation allows for the requested use by right and aligns with the rural center land use. This parcel is located in a portion of the corridor that has existing sporadic commercial development on land with both agricultural, residential, and commercial land uses. The pattern of development along 207 is, you know, predominantly is projected to be more commercial as it is a main corridor. The applicant will be required to provide mitigation in the form of buffering from the surrounding residential uses. Additional perimeter buffering around parking areas would also be required. The type of buffering will be required at the development review stage of the process. So the Planning Commission voted unanimously to approve both applications, so staff is recommending approval of the request to amend the future land use map from agricultural to rural center, and also recommends approval of the zoning designation amendment from agricultural to C1. That concludes my present, concludes my presentation, so...
Why would they have to buffer if they're between C1 rural center and ag? Why would they have to buffer the residential across the street that's clearly not used? But it's across the four lane highway.
Correct, and that buffer not be required across the street there. But if there's surrounding residential uses, I think that the classification if it's residential, the code requires incompatibility buffers, even though there is, that home could be 1,000 feet away. It is a requirement of the code, but we would have to determine that at the development review stage, if it was even necessary.
Even the residential house that's in the area is also an agricultural piece of property, so it's not residential to commercial. It's residential to agricultural road crawl.
Correct. And that would be determined, we'd have to determine those uses, if it was residential in nature then, or more agricultural in nature, then probably a buffer would be required.
Any other questions of staff at this time?
I have just one. With this particular zoning C, when it gets to the C, maybe I should ask it in the second part, but I'll go ahead and ask it now. Will they be able to have items stored outside of this building?
I don't, I don't believe in the C1 because it is a less intense commercial zoning designation, classification, so I don't know that outdoor storage, I believe that's a commercial intensive and required.
I'm not sure, like, you know, they sell hunting and fishing supplies, which maybe get into maybe small boats and things like that. Would they be able to leave them outside, so...
Overnight, I don't, I don't believe they would be able to leave them overnight continuously, however, if they went, I'm sure they could sell their goods and items outside in the C1.
And then move them back inside, okay, thank you.
Any other questions of staff at this time? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anybody that would like to speak in opposition to this application? In opposition to a zoning application? Sorry I didn't hear you, Douglas, you're gonna have to come to the microphone.
My name's Douglas Hayes, 216 Huron Avenue. I just wanted to know what the intended use is of the property, and the...
Anything that's allowed in C1 rural center.
Okay, well, I didn't know if they indicated what the, you know, is it gonna be a used tire store, or is it gonna be a...
Anything that's allowed in C1 rural center.
Okay.
I mean, we can't come up here and say it's only for single use, that's against the law.
I just wondered if they had indicated a intended use. The second thing is that when there was application, the surrounding citizens, did they respond and what was their response?
Well, I don't know if they responded any of the planning, did you have any citizens in the Planning Commission show up against or for?
No, sir, we did not. We also sent advertise, or I'm sorry, a public notice out to all properties within 300 feet of the subject parcel. So surrounding parcels were notified. Staff received no letters of opposition or emails or any correspondence.
Mr. Harvick, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, that was a question I had for staff. When I first became a Commissioner here, I was kind of told that we're not really supposed to know what's going on the property, just it fits into that zoning district, and I appreciate you saying that, because it is important that we make decisions based on land, not on usage in some cases. So if it fits the land use, then it should fit the zoning, and that's what we do. So thank you for saying that, Mr. Chairman.
Well, I guess I'm gonna have to ask a legal question here. If I know what's, what the proposed use is, do I have to tell that as part of this presentation, or is that something that I, that I do not have to say? Because I know what is proposed to be there, it was actually in the package, which is part of the public record.
So it's entirely up to you, I'll tell you that. I think your first comment was really on point. It's not something that, personally, I would suggest that you make as part of your analytical decision-making process, because even though a current property owner may have an intended use, I mean, think of how many times we've seen residential developments fall through, and then whoever purchases the property may have a different use, which is why, again, what you said was correct. Look at what the permitted uses by right are, and not necessarily what one particular intention is, because that literally could change tomorrow.
Okay, well, I will make the comment on that, that having a rural center and C1 out there where you got a mini-storey warehouse across the street and a commercial that they could build a shopping center on just towards Hastings from that, I don't see any impact on this whatsoever for the area, and especially with the Planning Commission unanimously taking it on both applications. But is there anybody else here that would like to speak for or against this application? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this application in our packet, that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan and LDC.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Now, we're gonna have to do these one at a time, even though they're tied together, I believe. So with that being said, the first one, we have, there wouldn't be a resolution on this, would there? Okay. Okay, so the motion, how it's presented, will be suitable. Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, the next one is the following case, which is the same case that just goes for the rezoning on the same piece of land. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of that rezoning application.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay. And with that, we're gonna move straight into presentations. We're gon', yes?
Am I buttoned? No, we're just after.
Well, for this meeting so far, I don't think this is working well at all, so if you would just do it the old-fashioned way and just kind of get my attention, then I'll call on you, and then we'll try to get some of this fixed. Also, two of our monitors up here aren't working, so Commissioner Wilkinson was kind enough to let me kind of share her monitor during the presentation, so we'll, we'll try to get some of that taken care of too, maybe before workshop if possible. With that being said, we're going to move into presentations. Number one is the, yeah, A is the first presentation, which is the Georgia Pacific presentation, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Harvey if he would read that presentation for us this morning. I'm gonna be down, is anybody here today that's from Georgia Pacific for this? Would you meet me at the podium, please?
Mr. Chairman, as you're making your way there, and the audience and fellow Commissioners, you heard me in my remarks at my swearing-in, how important Hudson Pulp and Paper in Georgia Pacific is to my family, so it's an honor for me to be able to read this proclamation today. Mr. Chairman, Putnam County Proclamation 2022-119, George Pacific Placa Mill, 75th Anniversary. Whereas George Pacific's pulp and paper mill first began operating in Putnam County on November 5th, 1947, and whereas since its operation began in 1947, the Georgia Pacific Mill has provided generations of Putnam County residents with jobs and a steady source of income to enrich their lives. And whereas economically, the George Pacific Mill remains the largest private employer in Putnam County, employing nearly 1,000 employees, plus an additional 2,426 indirect jobs in the community, with an economic impact of more than $1 billion annually. And whereas George Pacific generously contributes and participates in numerous community organizations such as the Education Foundation of Putnam County, United Way of St. John's Putnam, Putnam Habitat for Humanity, Rode Heaver's Boys Ranch, The Ark, the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, and many other worldwide worthwhile efforts. And whereas George Pacific endeavors in Putnam County education system has been substantial, with programs such as the Teacher and School Related Employees of the Year Awards, All County Sports and Athletic Awards, and many grants. And whereas George Pacific Scholarship Program for children of their employees has enabled numerous high school graduates to continue their education. And whereas George Pacific has had a positive impact on the quality of life for all Putnam County citizens, now therefore be it proclaimed, this 22nd day of November 2022, that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby recognizes and congratulates George Pacific in its 75th anniversary of business operations in Putnam County, and extends its best wishes for continued success in all future endeavors, done, ordered, and adopted this 22nd day of November 22, 2022. Mr. Chairman, I move ecstatically approval of this proclamation.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Pickens about Ms. Wilkinson, I'm sorry. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved, ayes have it.
I just wanted to say a brief word of thanks to the Commission for recognizing the mill. They're, they're super excited about the anniversary and, and working to serve the community for another 75 years, so thank you for your commitment to the community and thank you for this.
Absolutely. Okay. We're going to continue with presentations, and we're gonna ask Ms. Stella Brown to come forward with the One Book One Putnam Committee.
Good morning to each of you. We come to this morning once again with our annual book for One Book One Putnam, and I'm gonna challenge the Commissioners. They have nothing to do with this, so y'all have to fault me. We have a book discussion at each lair in Putnam County. I challenge each Commissioner to head up that book discussion this coming year. Total silence. Steve and Bob Lee will discuss what that book is. They will also be giving each Commissioner a copy of that book. The book is The Burning Sky by Tom Young, and I hope y'all enjoy it, and I hope y'all participate in all the events throughout Putnam County pertaining to this book, the finale, the kickoff, and the book discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stella. Mr. Crowley, I knew you would say so.
Mr. Turner, we have been doing this too long together. I appreciate that, and I appreciate all of you. And Ms. Wilkinson, welcome to the County Commission, and the joy. And Mr. Harvey, congratulations on another term. And the rest of you, just congratulations for being here. We appreciate you an awful lot. This is the 19th or 20th, this is the 19th year we've had the opportunity to promote reading in Putnam County. And as one of your predecessors often said, "It's a great day to be in Putnam County." And whenever we can encourage people to read in Putnam County, it's a great day. And that's what we're all about. As Bob Lee said in the newspaper article, "If we can get every resident of Putnam County to read at least one book a year, we have done great things." So we encourage you to help us do this reading. This year, as Stella said, this year's book is Red Burning Sky by Tom Young, and this is somewhat of a departure from books that we have chosen. For the last few years, we've sort of looked at Florida or the South. This is a very personal kind of story about World War II, about an effort to airlift hundreds of downed pilots out of Yugoslavia and get them back to safety in Great Britain and England. And it's, it's a story of heroism, it's a story of over... And it's, it's a story of heroism, it's a story of overcoming challenges. It's a story, there's a little bit of love and romance in it. But it's a story of courage and conviction and a story of redemption. And I think that's a story that speaks well to us today, that we need courage, we need redemption. And this is one way to look at it. The people standing behind me are the heart and soul of One Book, One Putnam. Joyce Oliver, Lulugail Griffiths, Helen Muir, and Bob Lee. Yvonne Parrish can't be with us. And Roberta Christen is oddly enough, I believe either yesterday or today, visiting the World War II Museum in New Orleans. I think she's going to stuff some artifacts into her, no, no, please not. I would not encourage that kind of thing. I just encourage you all, our kickoff will be coming up in January at the Palatka Golf Club. And our plans are still a little nebulous about that. And we will be, I have a little bird that speaks to me occasionally. I think, I think it is, that we will be celebrating and honoring some of our military veterans, particularly our World War II veterans who are becoming fewer and far between. And that is just unfortunately a nature of time. But this will give us an opportunity to recognize their service to all of us. So, I encourage you to read the book. As Stella said, we are challenging you to read it. And we're challenging you to lead one of the book discussions. That is, it is neat to see our elected officials involved in the community in supporting literacy and reading, as I am fond of saying, reading rocks. So, we appreciate you. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you for supporting One Book, One Putnam, and look forward to seeing you at some of our events.
Thank you. Any of your other members like to speak? Bob, Lulugail, Joyce, anybody, anybody, okay.
I would just like to say you can call me and tell me what date you would like to lead that book discussion. You know my email and you know my locations.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Stella. Would y'all please come up here and stand in front of the dice? And we'll stand up here where we can get everybody fit in and take a picture. I will soon as we're done. Sorry about that, Steve. But I need, I'll have to bend the first admit, I need supervision. So, thank you for that. Before y'all go sit down, I skipped that step. Thank you, Mr. Crowley, for helping me. Commissioner Adams Act is going to read the proclamation where we can pass the proclamation.
Putnam County Proclamation Number 2022-109. One Book, One Putnam, 2023. Putnam County Read Red. Red Burning Sky by Tom Young. Whereas, reading is an important activity for all the residents of Putnam County. And whereas, listen, half of the adult population of Putnam County now reads literature, the Board of Commissioners wishes to encourage all of the county's residents, both young and old, to read. And whereas, reading is one of the, one way to create bonds within a family and among friends and neighbors, we want to get everyone in the community, from high school youth and office workers to public officials and senior citizens, to read and discuss a great book together. And whereas, One Book, One Putnam is encouraging all residents to read Tom Young's Red Burning Sky, a World War II novel inspired by the greatest aviation rescue in the history. A book celebrating the steadfast bravery of our United States soldiers during World War II. And whereas, this program aims to revive literary reading in Putnam County, therefore, in support of this goal, there will be a book discussions, community activities, knowledgeable speakers. And whereas, the Board of Commissioners knows the residents of Putnam County will benefit and learn from reading this book. And whereas, One Book, One Putnam is celebrating 19 years of encouraging reading throughout Putnam County, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of Commissioners does hereby support learning through reading as promoted by One Book, One Putnam, and proclaims January and February 2023 as One Book, One Putnam County Read Month. Done, ordered, and adopted on 22nd day of November, 2022. So moved.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you.
And the author will be here for the finale.
Oh, wow.
Which is March 9.
March 9?
That's great, thank you.
You know I can cook something if you need something cooked. That's not a problem.
I heard rumors you could cook.
I can. And people can eat.
Okay. Mr. Pickens, were you able to find this out?
John, Representative.
I can, I can put it off another couple if we're thinking she might make it, you know, not, not an issue. I will do that. So, next, we'll ask Director JR Grimes to come forward, please. And all the staff, come on up. Come on, guys, don't be bashful, come on up, Gene, come on. Put you on the spot, didn't I?
Come on in.
All right, good morning, commissioners, Mr. Chairman, thank you for your time. Thank you, everybody in attendance, and thank you for our staff that were here this morning. Today's a day that you never want to do when you had to replace one of your team members. When I first accepted the job, I made a trip to Lake Como, and I talked to Chad, and I said, "Please just tell me that you'll at least apply for the job." And he did that. And he truly shined in the interviews, and we elected a true leader. And that's really tough to find sometimes, is just a true leader. Every time I needed something, I had people sitting right here beside me. Chief Hutchinson was one of them, that you could go, "I need to get this done." He goes, "I already finished it, it's all good." You know, when we went through the storms, it's already done. You know, and it's really, really, truly hard to find a true leader. And when they define a true leader, they make few of them. And Chad is one of the few leaders that we can have inside of our community. He served us for, I don't want to tell him how old he is, because he aged better than I did, but he served us for about 30 years, on and off. He started as a volunteer to set some fire stations. He left and went to central Florida and worked for a few years, and then he came back. He went up through the ranks of Italian chief, retired from the county then. And I knew he would be an important fixture in putting our team back together here. And he's done a phenomenal job. He has an opportunity out in front of him that he can prosper and move up in life. And I'm so tickled to death for him when he told me he was leaving. I told him I'm proud of him, that he had moved up and he'd be able to make these decisions that he was done. And I'm tickled to death, I'm gonna miss him greatly. We have a tough person in our team to replace, but I couldn't say enough positive words about him today. Our staff, we're gonna look for a replacement. It's gonna be a hard decision, but we'll do the best we can with what we have. So, with that being said, I'd like to present Chief Hutchinson with the acts in retirement that some of his staff has gotten him. So, if he would step forward, please.
Wow, that's beautiful.
And this is an act presented to Chief Hutchinson for his many years of service to the citizens of Putnam County, and we truly wish him the absolute best. Thank you. Well, thank you very much. As you guys know, I've had a passion for this department for a long time. And this is my 35th year. Thank you.
Chad.
Real quick, I would be remiss as the union president to not step up and talk about our chief. From a 19-year-old man working here, first job in fire rescue, had him there to show us the ropes and just moving up the chain as all of us have done. He's been there to be an established fixture for us and a steadfast leader. Been my honor to serve under him. The testament of the people here, you heard the payers going offer, we'd have more, but it's a busy day out there. Honestly, it's my fifth chief I've worked under, it's been my best. It's gonna be hard to replace, and I know Director Grimes has a tough road ahead of him to try to fill these shoes. So, as a young man that, that learned and grew under him and got confidence in the job, that I'm, I'm a quarter of what he is, and it's been an honor to serve him. So, definitely 35 years, ain't enough time.
Thank you, Nat. I just, go ahead, Clue.
Hey, thank you for allowing us this opportunity to come up here and, and talk about Chad Hutchinson, the fire chief. So, since taking the position of chief over the last two years, Chief Hutchinson has been a great asset to this department. I believe he is the most popular chief that we've had and the most light chief that Putnam County has had. His dedication, sacrifice, and commitment, commitment for the love of the job will never be forgotten. He has a heart of passion and concern for all members, and he has done so much over the last two years. You know, established emergency operations team that the county so badly needs. He's added stations, personnel, new apparatus. He's helped with the new communication centers. And not only that, but with Director Grimes led the department during the two hurricanes that were mentioned here earlier today. Here's years of service of Putnam County of 35, should be an example to the others. Just one thing I found out working with Chief Hutchinson and working for him, is that someone is gonna have to fill some pretty big shoes when he's gone. Many chiefs come and go, and there are a few great ones. But the property, the greatest one of them is Chief Jeff Hutchinson, and thank you for your service.
One of the best things about being chairman is that I get to go first. Chad, I haven't been any more excited for anybody that's joined Putnam County's team since you did, when you came back from retirement. And it was not disappointing. It was actually much better than even I thought it would be. You and JR and, and your team have taken that and turned it around to a big extent. And I know it's always a work in progress, but you guys have done a fine job. And, and I hate losing one of the good guys in our team, and that's what we're doing. But thank you for your service. Captain, yes, sir, chief. Mr. Pickens, Mr. Pickens.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'll start with my comments about many of the young men that are up here, my favorite young men. And JR and Chad, you're two of them. John, Paul, you're a little older, but our boys did. My wife taught you in school, but our boys played baseball together all the way through high school. But I watched these young men grow up. Chad actually worked for me when he was in high school at my store. And I knew he had a passion for firefighting and, and service such as that. But to be able to, when you came back and JR took over, to be able to work with you two young men at the EOC during these last two storms, and to see your professionalism and your experience and intelligence used out there with your whole staff was very special to me as a county commissioner, but more so as a citizen and a friend of each one of yours and your, and your parents. So, Chad, I wish you well. I told you I'd offer any help I can if you're going into the private sector, because I've been in it for 42 years. And, but I'm looking forward to, to what you'll do in your next endeavor. And thank you so much for your service to Putnam County. And I did say, I did say at the pre-agenda meeting, I said, "I guess when Chad gets home and his wife says, 'What'd you do at the job today?'" I said, "Well, I got axed." But I guess, I guess it was a good axed. So, anyway, congratulations.
Mr. Sugg, Administrator Sugg, did you have your light on?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's, Chad, thank you. Just simply, thank you. We've had more than one conversation in my office, the first one wasn't real good. And, you know, and I understood why, I really did. And so, you know, but that follow-up conversation, you know, we, we did a lot of good things here. We, you know, thanks to Chairman Turner, I'll give him a little credit here this morning, we put that fire community together. You know, JR coming over, you coming back, this team that you folks have assembled here. You know, the trials and tribulations that we were going through three years ago, we don't have them today. And it's because of leadership, and it's because of you folks. And it goes all the way down that line, you know, and how you guys are supportive of each other, working with each other, recruiting fellow, you know, folks to come and work with you. But that's a testament to, to how you folks have turned things around there. And it's a sad day for, for me and here, us here in Putnam County. But I want to join in with everybody telling you what a pleasure it's been to work with a professional such as yourself, and I wish you nothing but great, great things to come. And please, don't be a stranger. We're gonna still need, need some help. And, you know, and I just want you to just be happy and, you know, know that you're loved. Thank you for, thank you for all you've done.
Thank you. Will y'all please come up here and, oh, sorry, Commissioner Harvey first, I'm sorry.
A few weeks ago, when I got the email, usually I respond pretty quick. And in this case, chief, I didn't, it took me a few days to kind of swallow that lump. And you meant a lot to me. Probably, nobody in this room probably knows that you and I, that back in 2014, when I was laid up on my sofa with cancer surgery, you came out and visited me many times and sat there and talked to me as a, as a servant of the people. And you gave me advice on things that I needed to know. And I never forgot all that, never forgot your compassion when I was laying there, because you know how hard it is for me to lay around, that's not something I want to do. But I got the email, and I responded. And I responded that you're gonna do great things in life, and you've done a great job here. And coming back proved to me the kind of man you are, is to come back, assume the position, and grow the position, and welcome more people on. So, in your future endeavors, the only advice I can give you from the small business owner that I was for years, run with that ball chasing you downhill. It's well worth it at the end of the day. Congratulations, and I'll be praying for you, my friend. Thank you.
Mr. Adams.
Chad, I just want to say, every dealing I ever had with you was with honesty and integrity, and I appreciate that more than you understand. I think you're gonna be extremely successful out in the other world, we'll call it. Because you're, I believe you'll run your business in that way, and that's two of the key things. And I really appreciate, even when it was things that maybe I didn't want to hear or people didn't want to hear, you always stated them as fact in the way that they were. And if they were opinion, you stated them that way as well. So, your honesty and integrity, I pray to God that whoever follows in your footsteps, that they carry that same honesty and integrity, because that's one of the most important things for your people, as well as us in the position that you filled. And thank you very much for your time here.
Thank you.
So, my first day and your last day. Yeah, right, okay. Well, I haven't had the privilege of working with you, but I certainly know of your stellar reputation you have throughout the community. And Putnam County has been better served for you being in the position you've been. So, thank you for your service, and thank you for being, for, for, for your 30, 30 years or 35? 35 years of service, thank you.
If y'all would have come and joined in front of the dice right here where we can get a picture of everybody. JR, please stand in front of Commissioner Harvey, he's the only one that can see over your head.
You don't have to, you don't have to take that literally. Well, the chairman, when the chairman speaks, that he thinks is reorganized.
Stop it, bye, see you later.
Okay, we're going to move back up the agenda to item B. And we're going to ask Commissioner Pickens to read the proclamation for the National Hospital of Cautive Care Month. Hospice and Palative Care Month.
Rodney, you want to come up front? It's Rodney Phillips. Thank you for coming in on a short notice, um, so we, you know, we thought it was schedules or we missed something somewhere.
That's okay.
Putnam County Proclamation Number 2022-120, National Hospice and Palative Care Month, November 2022. Whereas for forty years, community hospice and palliative care have helped provide comfort and dignity to thousands of people in North Florida, allowing them to live their last months, weeks, or days comfortably with the people they love. Whereas, community hospice and palliative care utilize an interdisciplinary and team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. Whereas beyond the providing physical treatment, community hospice and palliative care attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services like respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas, community hospice and palliative care provides community-based palliative care, which delivers expertise to improve quality of life and relief from pain, and can be provided anytime during illness. Whereas, in an increasingly fragmented and broken health care system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how health care can and should work at its best for its patients. Whereas, every year, one point five million Americans living with long-term, long-life-limiting illness, and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs and communities throughout the United States, including community hospice and palliative care. Whereas, community hospice and palliative care is an advocate and educator about advanced care, planning that helps individuals make decisions about their, the care that they want. Whereas, the Centers for Medical and Medicaid Services have pledged to put patients first in all of its programs, including hospice, ensuring a coordinated and patient-led approach to care, protecting patients' choice and access to individualized service based on a patient's unique care needs and wishes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Putnam County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 2022 as National Hospice and Palative Care Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs, done, ordered, and adopted this twenty-second day of November 2022. Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt this proclamation.
Second. We have a motion and a second. If any further discussion, seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have a motion, carries unanimously. Okay, uh, thank you for that, and we're going to move down the agenda to item E. The county-wide project update by Deputy Administrator Julianne Young.
Thank you, Chairman.
Would the commission like a five-minute break? Yeah, let's take a five-minute break before we do that, Ms. Young.
This morning's update is not intended to be an all-inclusive list of every project or initiative underway by county departments, but a list of those most important to our citizens, our administration, and/or our commission. We will begin this morning with the port project by administration. The barge port feasibility study conducted by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers is in progress with an estimated completion date of July of 2024. A consultant composed the economic report to reinforce the feasibility study is pending submission to the Corps. The final draft is being reviewed and tweaked by the consultant, the Army Corps, economists, and staff. The application for the Port Infrastructure Development Program grant with the United States Maritime Administration was approved for a grant of three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. Staff has since met with the Maritime Administration's South Atlantic Director to discuss the project and the port's future. Staff has also been in contact with the U.S. DOT Grants Management Supervisor regarding grant conditions and requirements. Staff has also developed and submitted a grant application for the State's Department of Economic Opportunity Rule Infrastructure Fund Grant Program to supplement the federal funds sought to finance an extensive and comprehensive report for the port development plan. The animal control facility, RFP 2238, was issued on September 27th to solicit proposals from qualified design-build firms. The evaluation team will be hearing presentations from the four firms that responded to the RFP for design-build of the animal facility on November 29th. Following the presentations on November 29th, the evaluation team will hold a final evaluation meeting for the purpose of establishing a rank order of the proposing firms. The rank order is tentatively scheduled to be presented to the B OCC at the December 13th meeting. If approved as recommended, contract negotiations will begin in rank order. Emergency Services has the ISO rating countywide going on. On September 20th, we had the ISO on-site survey completed. Expect to receive results from the countywide ISO rating in approximately six months. Information Technology has several projects ongoing. The phone system, E911 caller ID updates are in progress. Networking is working to update the E911 addresses and caller IDs for the phone system. The project is ongoing. The network security assessment is in progress. Networking on the comprehensive assessment for our network and potential security issues is ongoing. The Smart Cop map project is nearing completion. The Putnam County Sheriff's Office has begun beta testing the new maps in the field. Once they are satisfied, the runtime content will be distributed to all users. The Nutanix cluster is nearing completion. Data migration is underway. The Georgetown Park update, Parks and Recreation Division, the conceptual drawings along with suggestions for completing certain requirements of the grant with the Florida Communities Trust will be present, has been presented to departmental staff. The consultants from UF are finalizing the documents. Once received, staff expects to present the information in January at a workshop for B OCC review and direction. Parks and Recreation also has the Flora Home Park Historic Building project underway. The electrical and lighting fixtures will be installed the end of this week. The power will be turned on. The flooring is scheduled to be installed the week of December 19th. The kitchen cabinets will be installed after the New Year. In 2023, Palmetto Hall will celebrate its hundredth birthday, and it is the plan of the Flora Historic Society, with assistance by the county, to be finally able to celebrate the grand opening of the beautiful historic building. Parks and Recreation also has the Pickleball Project at Triangle Park. The Pickleball Project is moving forward with an estimated start date the end of November. The Public Works Division has the Fort Gates Ferry Landing Project. The fabrication of the metal ramp is complete. The installation of the ramp has been delayed due to the recent storms, and the anticipated date of completion has not yet been determined. St. John's Avenue Resurfacing, Palm Avenue, CSX Crossing at the Flaca Fire Station. The anticipated advertisement date for construction has been moved to January to allow city, the city, to complete the water main improvements in the area. County Road 310 Bridge Rehabilitation Project, the advertisement for construction services has been published, and bids are due back November 30th, 2022. Subject to sewer conversion phase three, the contractor has obtained the materials to begin the construction activity. The anticipated date of completion is February 2023. Dirt to pave 2021, paving activities on Park, Whitehall, Nancy, Lloyd, Lynn, Ida, Dixon, Sandy, North Lake, George Drive, South Lake, George Drive, Palm, and Atkins are complete. Norwood, Tropic, Cypress, Walt, Mossom, and Darren are expected to be completed and paved before the end of the year. Dirt to pave 2022, RFQ documents to design services are complete, and staff anticipates advertising before the end of this month. East Putnam Drainage and Flooding Mitigation Phases One through Four. Phase Three construction activities are underway and anticipated to be completed by the end of this month. Phase Four permitting and design activities are underway. St. John's Avenue Drainage Improvement, State Road 19 to County Road 309C. The notice to proceed has been issued to the contractor, and construction activities are scheduled to be completed in April of 2023. St. John's Avenue Multi-Use Trail Construction is anticipated to begin in September of 2023. South Palm Sidewalk, Drood Street to Silver Lake Drive, the construction contract has been awarded, and the pre-construction meeting is scheduled for next week. Saratoga Harbor Drainage Projects, Gibbs Avenue, Public Works is seeking proposal to complete the project using alternative means approved by the B OCC. James A. Long Elementary and Jingits Middle School Safe Routes to School Project, a hundred percent of the design plans have been approved by FDOT. The construction funding agreement from FDOT is on this morning's agenda for B OCC review and approval. County Road 315 Resurfacing Project, sixty percent of the design plans are under review, and the final design is expected to be completed by February of 2023. Port Buena Vista Wastewater Treatment Plant Conversion and Sewer Main Extension, the executed funding agreement from St. John's River Water Management District was recently obtained to provide additional funding for the project. The advertisement for construction services has been posted, and bids are due December 27th. Paradise Point Sewer Hardening System and Generator Installation, one bid was obtained to complete the project, and coordination with FDM is underway for additional funding considerations. County Ride Guard Rail Installation Repairs and Replacements, the pre-construction meeting has been completed, and activities are anticipated to be completed April of 2023. Countywide Road Resurfacing Project 2022, the contractor began resurfacing East Cracker Swamp Road last week. The anticipated date of completion for all roads is May of 2023. Countywide Striping Project, the contractor has completed the work, and the final punch list items are being addressed. East Palaca Subject to Sewer Project Phase Four, Public Works is coordinating with the designer of the existing sewer infrastructure to obtain the required specifications to advertise this project. Countywide Bridge Repair is 2022. The pre-construction meeting has been completed, and activities are anticipated to be completed by April of 2023. East Palaca Water Plant retrofit project, the project is underway. Bard and Ranchette Road Resurfacing Project, bids have been obtained to complete the project. Staff anticipates presenting this item to the B OCC for discussion and award in December. San Mateo Water Expansion Project, one bid was obtained to complete the project. Staff is currently reviewing the response and anticipates presenting this item to the B OCC for discussion and award in December. Northern Putnam Drainage Project, the project involves drainage and roadway improvements along portions of Palmetto Bluff Road and Milliken. The funding agreement to complete the projects on Ms. Moore's consent agenda for review and approval. South Putnam Drainage Project, this project includes drainage improvements near St. John's Fishing Lodge Road and County Road 309. The funding agreement to complete this project is on this morning's consent agenda for review and approval. That concludes this morning's project update.
Could I, uh, make a, uh, comment? Can you turn this into a two- or three-page report with double or triple the font size? I'm having issues without a magnifying glass.
I can do that, sir.
Because this is such a quick report, um, I need to review it after the meeting, and like I said, I'll need a magnifying glass. Yes, Commissioner Wilson.
Thank you. This is a very comprehensive report, and it certainly answers a lot of my questions that I had coming in. But could you give us an update on the West Fire Station, West Fire Station?
West Putnam. Yes, ma'am, I can briefly tell you that we got the legislative appropriation for two million dollars, and staff is currently working with both design firms to look at that building as well as identify a location that fits within the parameters of the area where we have the least coverage and would allow that area to be better served.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Julianne, this morning I asked you about that Norwood area. Did you get a response back from Mr. Rodriguez?
Not at this time, but I'm gonna get the details on Norwood for you and get you the updated detailed plan on paving that road.
Commissioners, what we have is we have a contractor that's got everything ready, but they're just not putting asphalt down for whatever reason, asked for an extension, and Mr. Nimitz felt like that wasn't necessary from, if I'm not speaking out of turn, but we gotta get this thing moving on, and this contractor needs to get these roads done that he's been doing. I'll just leave it like that. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Julianne.
Yes, sir.
May I ask, is it the same contractor that we were having the issues with out off Carlin?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm assuming y'all have something in the works to talk to them about.
Yes, sir.
We'll leave it there for now, then.
Yes.
On the fourth item, one, two, three, four, five, fifth item on the list of Georgetown Park.
Yes, sir.
Could we schedule that on a workshop sometime in like, maybe the December workshop? I would like to have an update on it. On the only part that I want is whether, whether or not they have the Parks and Rec Committee and Mr. Gerard.
Gerard.
David Gerard. Gerard has decided that it is or is not a proper place for a boat ramp, because if it's not, or if we deem that it's not, then we need to not stock hold the money for some project that's never gonna come to fruition. So, maybe it needs to, we need to move farther, harder on the other option, which is the DOT property up there at Dunn's Creek that we all talked about, and so, I just, that was our first, our first shot at it, was we had agreed as a board, we had agreed that we'd try to do Crescent City at the Georgetown Park if it was able. But I'm understanding the water's real shallow there, and that there's some wetlands we'd have to mitigate and some different things. It may not be a viable option, I just don't know. And if it's not, we don't need to be holding on to that money. We need to go and try to press forward on the DOT property off of Dunn's Creek, which is the, in my book, would be second to that one. If we put, does that give you enough time, Commissioner Pickens, to have any additional information?
I don't, I don't think that's gonna give it enough time. Can we see about doing it in January? Because we do have the report back from UF and IFAS, and we have that, but I think we need to, like you say, drill down to see if it is feasible, um, you know, to do then what will be involved, and whether it's gonna be dredge or something like that.
Well, you need to put it off again if you would contact staff, and we'll try to accommodate you. I just would like to.
I'm ready to see it move forward.
One way or the other.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Young, for that report.
Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bill, go ahead.
Along on the Georgetown Park is, one of the things that has been accomplished with this new management plan is we'll be able to present that to the, and community lands and trusts to try to get back in compliance. So we need to do that, whether we build a boat ramp or not. So I think we've got that in place. Julianne, on the animal control shelters, if I understood, the evaluation committee will review the bids, okay? And then you'll select one, and that'll come back to us on the first meeting in December.
The evaluation committee is already reviewing those proposals we received for. And then they, each of those four firms will make a presentation to that evaluation committee on November twenty-ninth, next week. And then following those presentations, based on their proposals and the presentations, the evaluation committee will score them. They will give them a grade, and then we will present to you a rank order. So not just the top, but we will, we will put them in order of, of firms that the evaluation committee has graded to be of best value to the county in order. And then if the board approves the recommendation of the evaluation committee, staff will begin negotiating with that top-ranked firm to determine if we can, in fact, reach a mutually agreeable contract.
Okay, then if we do approve, then the contractor will move forward with designing a building.
Designing and, and construction activities of that animal control facility, yes, sir.
Okay, so with this, this project's been moving along slowly for a number of years, but this is where we're to the point where it is moving forward. We still have seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir.
Set aside for this. The property has been selected, the borrowings have been done.
Yes.
So this is the next step, and it's moving forward as fast as it can.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because I had Ms. Jenny Oakwood reach out to me about this, and there's a lot of citizens concerned of where we're headed with this, but I think we're moving forward about as fast as we can. And I told her, I said, I can't speak for the whole commission. I said, but I do believe that each one of us, and I don't assume for Ms. Wilkinson, Commissioner Wilkinson, is that she would be for moving this forward. So I think we've got board support, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the update.
Yes, sir.
Any other, we'll move on. Lights aren't working this morning, so if anybody needs to kind of wave me down or like you, give me a little sock in the arm with Bill while you're speaking with her. So good. We'll move forward with a public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberation about matters on which the board has received no prior information. Please limit yourself to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently placed in the back of the meeting room, and, and they don't have to be filled out. We would appreciate if they did. This is for agenda items only. Would you like to make a comment, Mr. Hayes? Okay, on about an agenda item? Okay, please come forward.
Douglas Hayes, two sixteen Huron Avenue. Regards to the Barge Port project. As you're moving forward, perhaps it's time to get a department head or somebody to manage the project. Still a point of contact is the county administrator and the grant writer.
Not on our agenda.
You guys are, are the.
It's not on our agenda, Mr. Hayes.
She was, when she gave the list of all the.
You mean the what she's trying to accomplish?
Yes.
It's not on our agenda. She was giving us an update of what's going on in the county.
Wouldn't I be able to comment on the stuff that she listed?
Yes, sir, at the end of the meeting under public comment. This is public comment for agenda items.
Okay, because.
It's not on the agenda.
The list that she gave off was the, was on the agenda, so I was commenting.
That was an update on projects.
Okay. Then the last thing would be in regards to that, the Small-Scale Land Use Amendment and the rezoning. Is that transparency when the applicant did give?
That's not on our consent agenda either, Mr. Hayes.
Okay, perhaps I'm mistaken. Public comment on agenda items.
Yes, sir.
So I'm assuming.
Consent agenda item.
So it would be page two, then, is what you're referring to? That I would be making a comment on?
Consent agenda, yes, sir.
Okay, so it's not on the stuff that you had just discussed?
Already passed, you mean?
Yeah.
Those are.
Okay, then I'll sit down, wait my turn, thank you.
Yes, we'll do it at public comment when I have your card here, when it's the public comment on all items.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to comment on the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment on consent agenda, and I'll ask commissioners at this time if they'd like to remove anything from the consent agenda. And I'll start with Commissioner Adamsak.
Item E.
Commissioner Harvey.
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
I have none, sir.
Commissioner Pickens.
Aye.
Aye. And I have nothing for the.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve items on the consent agenda, item A, B, C, D, F, G, H.
We have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda with the exception of E and I. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Commissioner Adamsak, item E.
So, so I pulled item E just because I, I got several emails about item E, and I guess the concern people had was with, with the school districts doing closing schools and stuff, and Jenkins Middle School being closed already. They were like, why are you paving, why are you going to do that sidewalk? But I did send them the picture that we have, and obviously that sidewalk goes, serves that whole community all the way to James A. Long. I'm not sure where the district is going to put the new James A. Long or new whatever. But in the meantime, it's going to be a few years. Even if it was only that time period, it's going to serve that community well. I just wanted to note that for public comment that people brought to me. I do think this is a good idea. There are several spots closer to that far end that are really bad. There's that little wooden bridge as well. I drove that and walked that a couple of times here when I was trying to deliberate, but my thoughts were on the comments that I got. So I just wanted to put that out there for the people that had questions about why we're doing this. And I do believe the district is going to put a school somewhere along that path as well from conversations I had, but obviously none of that is in stone, so.
Okay, Commissioner Wilkinson.
Well, I appreciate Paul's, Commissioner Adamsak's comments, but I was sold on this whenever I saw that this was an a county-funded project, and it was a Florida Safe Routes to School, and it's money coming in from F D O T. So anything that we can get in, I'm all for getting in funds from the state and federal government to help improve our county.
Thank you. Commissioner Adamsak, would you like to make a motion to pass that?
I'd make a motion that we pass item D, I mean E, sorry.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Commissioner Pickens, item I.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a little history on this for Commissioner Wilkinson. Is this vacation of this portion of Bass Drive was presented a couple of years ago by Mr. Cartwright. And the day, we were actually back in Zoom meetings then, so we were Zooming, and there was some opposition, which was kind of a surprise, there was opposition there, so we did not move this forward. Mr. Cartwright decided to pull this until just a few months ago, where it came to the board again and was going to go to the public hearing process for the same ask of the vacation of this particular portion. And the county felt with our county attorney that it wasn't a hundred percent clear who owned this strip of land, this road. So we were able to do title searches, which took a lot longer than we thought. So it came back that the county does own this. So I just want to make a statement that this is just to move this forward, to move it forward to the public process where people would be notified and noticed, and that there would be a public hearing, I believe, on January tenth, where citizens could come and speak for or against this. So I just wanted to make that clear, and there will be opposition for this vacation, so. And if there's any questions.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. So when the, when we as the county obtain these kind of easements or right-of-ways, does the county pay public dollars for them?
From what I understand on this particular one, that it was just dedicated to the public.
It was dedicated to a plat?
There are instances where the county could pay for an easement, but in this particular, all research indicates that there were no monetary dollars that were spent in, in recording the easement.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
When we discussed this at workshop, one of my questions at that time from the attorney was, can we declare this excess property and put it up for sale?
Right.
It was not, it was not, we were not able to do that by way of our attorney. He said that the only thing we could do was either keep it or vacate it, because it wasn't platted, for a platted road for a subdivision of the county own. So, so I think my, my preference would have been to declare it surplus, but we can't do that, so.
Does that make sense, thank you.
Okay, all right, with that, I'll make a motion that we accept item I.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for item I. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Okay, we're going to move down to code enforcement for a fine reduction case, number two thousand and twenty oh oh five fourteen. Come on down, Mr. Moore.
Word to Commissioner.
The address is one five zero five South State Road nineteen. The property owner is Yeo Gonzalez. The violation was unsafe structure. The original fine amount was thirteen thousand four hundred and twelve dollars, and the total cost of enforcement action is one thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars. The property owner is now compliant and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is there anyone here to speak on this particular case? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on that case and ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve staff recommendations, reduce the fine to sixteen hundred and sixteen dollars to be paid within ninety days.
We have a motion in a second to reduce to sixteen sixteen and pay it within ninety days. Is there any additional comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Thomas.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Next, we'll go to item number nine, Mr. Rat, Honorable Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing to bring to the board this morning, other than to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving this week.
Thank you, sir. Same to you and your family. We'll go to appointments next, and we'll start with Commissioner Pickens.
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson.
I have none.
Commissioner Adamsak.
I have one.
Commissioner Harvey.
I have none.
And I have none today. Okay, that being said, we'll go to public comment on miscellaneous items. Same spiel as before, please hold your comments to three minutes. And Mr. Hayes.
Douglas Hayes, two sixteen Huron Avenue. In regards to the animal shelter that's in a design-build format, to save, as a cost savings, I'd like to point out that there's two separate factors. You have your administrative offices for the two-lagers, and then you have the kennel situation for the four-lagers. One way as a cost savings is the schools that are being sold off and dismantled or whatever. It's for the administrative offices, that they may have a school portable that we could use, and that way we could focus our revenues towards the kennels. And then at a later point in time, we could generate revenue to improve the administrative office. As an example, one of the cost-effective ways in kennel design, because the lack of allowance versus an input, is called Greenspan or LumaShield. It's the same thing that you make walk-in coolers. It's a snap-together function, and it levates a lot of structure and cost. If you go to the county fair, the FEMA building is a portable building made out of a LumaShield. And you, it's roughly, I'd say probably fifteen hundred square foot. They put it up in three days, costs about fifty thousand bucks. Where the drawback is, that has an actual canvas thermal insulated roof versus they also make an LumaShield roof design, too. Okay, the next thing. Now that you have new leadership and it's a new term, I'd like to point out that it'd be a good idea for a rebrand. Make up your mind. We're legislative as animal services, but they run around with animal control. But the mainstream of society is those are our family members. And if you look at Jacksonville, the largest no-kill shelter in the United States, or one of, it's animal services and rescue. Get it straight. I've been telling you for almost six years now in regards to licensing, education, and enforcement. Hypothetically, if we have seventy-five thousand citizens in the, in the county, and let's say there's sixty thousand dogs, at five dollars per license, that's three hundred thousand revenue for operating costs. Since you have not made any decision to educate and enforce, we have a loss of almost a million and a half dollars of revenue, operating costs. It'd be a good time to go to our veterinarians and make it one-stop shopping. I actually went to Brick and Mortar to vaccinate my dogs with that idea, and they had no idea what I was talking about. The other thing. To educate you as far as, Mr. Harvey had presented during a forum that we were a no-kill shelter. We're legislative as a kill shelter. We're a member of the No Kill Shelter Coalition. I think that we need to legislate that we're a no-kill shelter. It really doesn't change the price of coffee. The times that we euthanize are when they're extremely aggressive dogs and case scenario. Once again, it falls under the mainstream of society. The prisoner, the location choice.
You're about to wrap it up, Douglas, you had three minutes.
The location choice was by the Citizens Advisory Board, was a piece of property by Triangle Park, where the leadership had chose to put it next to the jail with the idea that the prisoners might get some type of certification in the Vet Tech and Veterinary Assistant Program with the idea to obtain employment. But if you've got a criminal background, you are not going to get certified. And even if you did on an employment basis, would a veterinarian want to hire somebody who has a criminal background that's going to be theft, abusive behavior, or drugs versus somebody that led a good life and got the certification? The best for the reduction of recidivism is horticulture. Thank you.
Thank you, Douglas. We're going to move down to the administrators' comments, county administrators' comments.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just again, just joining everybody and wishing everybody a happy Thanksgiving this week, but we've got a couple of things that we probably ought to put on our radar for the, for the next meeting. And one of those is your December twenty-seventh meeting, and the date that it falls the day after the Christmas holiday. So it's been customary that you folks will make a decision whether or not we're going to hold that meeting. Now we can discuss that at the next meeting and make a formal notification one or the other on that. And secondly is.
Will there be any advantage to you to do that today? It doesn't really matter if we do it today or next time.
It would, it would be an advantage just to go ahead and let everybody know and make that decision, so we can put the notice out that the Board of County Commissioners will only hold one meeting.
That would take a board motion and vote, wouldn't it, to just.
Yes, sir.
To just cancel the second meeting in December?
Yes, sir, it would.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we cancel the second meeting in the, of the Board of County Commission meeting in December.
We have a motion in a second to cancel the second meeting in December. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll update the calendars with that new information. And secondly, and the last thing that I have this morning is, first of all, welcome Commissioner Wilkinson to the dais. And, you know, and thank you for the phone calls that I've received so far, and I look forward to that. so far and I look forward to that communication continuing and building that rapport. Like I told you the other day, we're problem solvers and we can't solve them unless we know about them. So please continue to reach out to us. That's, that's, that would be outstanding. And now that we do have a new elected commissioner, we've got a couple vacancies on some committees that the former commissioners had on and we'll get those. I've asked Laura to pull me a list of those committees so we can bring them to a workshop for discussion, so we can look at who might want to fill those, those seats in the future. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Shug, next, we're going to go to county attorney. Anything to add to the research? Thank you. With that being said, like I said earlier in the day when it came to Chief Hutchinson, it also gives me the opportunity to welcome Yod as the first commissioner to the, to the DIAS. Congratulations on your election. We really look forward to working with you with your experience, knowledge, and what goes on in the state. I think you're going to be a very well-added addition to Commissioner Harvey, who works hard up there too, whenever he gets that opportunity. So I, I want to certainly welcome. I know it was an election that at times became very ugly and uncalled for, so I'm glad you hung in there. I'm glad you kept Eugene out of jail. But again, welcome to the commission. I look forward to serving with you. And with that, I'm going to move commissioner comments to Commissioner Adamsak.
I'd like to welcome Yod Wilkinson to the, our board as well. Congratulate you, Chairman and Vice Chair Harvey, on your new leadership positions. Obviously Chad has been a resource here for 35-plus years. He's an example of, of a local person that, that stayed with it and needed to leave for a little bit and come back. But that's what we need more of here as far as our employees and that, is people local as much as we can possibly get to recruit locally. I think that'll help in our retention and whatnot and I think he's a great example of that and a true leader that we have. I'll leave my comments at that and have a happy Thanksgiving, everyone. I think it's going to be a blessed week and hopefully the weather holds out through all of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Adamsak. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to echo, welcome Commissioner Wilkinson?
Still being used to it, Commissioner Wilkinson. Okay, Commissioner Wilkinson.
I said it on the radio this morning, so I said it the first thing, so we're good to go. I do want to say, I've got a complaint from Mrs. Stigpen over the weekend about some loud music at the fairgrounds. I guess there was some, a party that moved from one location to another, but I don't know much about it, so we can talk about later and find out. That's not a problem.
I had, I had actually reached out to President Dubo of the Fair Authority and talked to him and they're actively working on it. They did hear the comments, they did hear the complaints from Miss Stigpen and others and that they're trying to address it. They thought they had it addressed a few months ago and we haven't had any issues from then until now. Just seemed like they were told that they couldn't play loud music after, I think it's 9:30 at night, but they just completely disregarded it and cranked it on up. So the fair, the JR Dubo Jr. said that he is going to take it to his committee to try and make some, to try to come up with some kind of a penalty or something if you violate those rules, instead of just telling you that you can't do it. So they, the fair board is actively working on that as we speak.
Thank you, thank you. Today, something really neat is, is happening. A few weeks ago during the storm, FPNL reached out to me and I had a concern, we were without power for 24 hours in our neighborhood. And, you know, at 3:30 in the morning, when you're filling up generators and you don't hear a whole lot going on out behind you, it was concerning to me. Clay Electric was our provider and they just had some trouble getting to that area where 183 homes were without power. I casually mentioned that to FPNL, Carol Saviock, while, while she was on the phone with me that next day. She, FPNL reached out to our Rotary Club, gave us $1,000 to help feed those people in need. So we partnered with Crescent City Rotary, we partnered with Placca Sunrise Rotary, and yesterday I cooked 15 turkeys, so five will go south, five will go in Placca, and five will go in the West Putnam area. And it was kind of neat that we partnered with those three rotaries, but we also partnered with Enlaken High School Culinary Arts Department and they fixed all the sides. So the three president, club presidents will be meeting at the high school at 3:30 today, taking food south to Crescent City, taking food to Placca to the Bread of Life, and taking food to the Soup Kitchen in Enlaken to feed about 100 people at each location. So whenever we can leverage our, our abilities to reach out in the community, we should do that. But I just wanted to give a tip of the hat to the Enlaken High School Culinary Arts Department and our fellow Rotarians and a big shout out to Florida Power and Light for what they did. And I want to take this opportunity to thank my commissioners for voting me as vice chairman and happy Thanksgiving to everyone out there. Stay safe and enjoy your holidays. God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey. Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. First again, I'd like to welcome Commissioner Wilkinson and look forward to serving with you. And your experience from your water management experience to private sector, real estate, to Bobby Payne's legislative assistant for the last six years are going to be invaluable for Putnam County. Truly believe that. Commissioner Turner and Commissioner Harvey, congratulations on your new positions. It was an honor to serve again as chairman and I truly appreciate the recognition. Speaking of recognition, I would like to just mention Charles Overturf Supervisor Elections and his team. I served on the canvassing board. I remember after my first meeting, Commissioner Harris recommended to stay away from the canvassing board because of the time that it takes. We didn't have a recount, but there were many, many meetings, a seminar in Orlando and then all the different meetings that we had leading up to finalizing the election results. But Charles runs a very professional department over there and it was truly a pleasure to, to interact and work with, with those, those people. And also Julianne's husband, George, is the board attorney, so we've got to know him just a little bit better. And also Judge Morris, who I grew up with in South Putnam. Another recognition, I'd just like to mention the West family, Ronnie and Judy West, who lifelong residents of Crescent City. Judy was an educator in Crescent City for 40 years, which is a long time to be a teacher, but she just stepped down as city commissioner last Monday when they swore in the new commissioners and giving back to the community as an educator, as a citizen, and as a elected official. And last but not least, it was very special to have my wife sworn in today for her second term and to have Bewell there. And today is my mother's 92nd birthday, so Ms. Della Hill Pickens, I would like to wish you happy, happy birthday and wish you many more and just hope everybody has a, a very, very safe and happy Thanksgiving holiday. It's my favorite because you don't have to give presents and you can just join in family and fellowship and just be thankful for everything, so that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wilkinson?
Thank you. It's a great day to be in Putnam County, for sure. A few things I want to mention. My replacement at Representative Bobby Payne's office is Chondale Goddard and she will be the new local district aide here in Putnam County and I think she'll serve that office well. She was here earlier along with his other aide that's now in Marion County because he's now, has St. John's in Marion County in addition to Putnam and Clay. And Chondale will do great. She'll be out in the community, so when you see her, please welcome her to that new position. A couple of things that I wanted to mention that we have going on in the community. I know usually Commissioner Adamsak brings up a few things and he's always saying, "If you can't find something to do, you're just not looking because there's plenty of things to do in Putnam County." The annual Christmas part, Christmas parade is of course Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. And so that starts down in downtown Placca. We also have the Festival of Trees, which is at the Beck Chevrolet dealership and they'll have 30 lit Christmas trees there. And it's actually, when you go down Reed Street, it's the only place that you're going to see those Christmas trees there lit up for the community. And so that starts also the day after Thanksgiving, they'll start decorating them and then they'll sell tickets after that and somebody will be getting a nice Christmas tree. And Open Door Church of God is hosting a Buy a Tree, Change a Life, which is a Christmas tree event that serves to raise money for local charities in our community. And we usually try to get a tree from there every year and they, all of their proceeds, they give back to the community. So thank them for doing that. And we just have such big hearts here in Putnam County and, and I just am so thankful that people are giving and...